Meeting via Zoom. This meeting is being recorded. Today's March 9, 2021. It's approximately 2:00 P.M. The roll call. Greg Cox?
Here.
Rich Hartman?
Here.
Andy Roberts?
Here.
Don C. Eleanor. So, Richard Wills?
Here.
Matt Brundsted?
Here.
Okay, do I have a mo- we'll come back and excuse for whatever we have to do for Eleanor. I said I have a purpose. So, do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'd move that we approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
Second.
Was there any discussion on that?
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Motion approved the minutes of February 23, 2021.
I moved the minutes.
No moved.
Any discussion?
And Greg Hughes seconded, correct?
I moved, but I don't care.
Second. Do we have any public comments? Did you get anything, Sarah, in writing? Request?
I did not see written request, but I, we have three citizens on the line. Marlene Penry, do you have a public comment?
Yes, I do, please.
Okay, go ahead.
This is regarding the agenda item today on landscaping. I think you can't really talk about landscaping without talking about the clearing ordinance, 17.5100. And I want to emphasize that this is not just about significant trees, which seems to be about all is talked about regarding clearing. It's also about leaving some other natural vegetation in our neighborhoods. For a little historical perspective from when this ordinance was last updated, we were trying to address several problems. People were clearing lots and putting them up for sale where they could sit for years. We wanted to stop this speculative clearing because it caused erosion problems and unnecessary loss of native vegetation. Also, all vegetation was being cleared down to sand all the way to water's edge on waterfront properties. This has since been stopped via the shoreline management plan, although I don't know if it's being enforced. It was decided that the way to address these problems was a landscape plan, sometimes called a plot plan, that would accompany each clearing permit, which was to be completed by the owner of the property when they were ready to build. It was to show a to-scale footprint of house, garage, driveways, et cetera. It was to show the actual placement of significant trees. It would therefore become obvious which trees and vegetation had to be cut down to build the house and which could stay. 10% of significant trees were to stay. If they had to be cut down, they were to be replaced with three trees. This is in the trees section of the code. It was in trees, replacing with trees was implied. Unfortunately, it's not being looked at that way. The landscape plan was also to show where there were other native vegetation that could stay. All of this was to put the responsibility for selective clearing on the homeowner, not the excavator. So, what's happened? The decisions and responsibility for what gets cleared was supposed to rest with the homeowner, but the clearing permit now can be signed by owner or agent, the latter of which is often the excavator. I haven't looked at permits for about a year, but the plot plan typically was a scribble with the words clear all or a rectangle for the house and clear all. We've lost all attempts to retain some trees and natural vegetation in our neighborhoods. Since the majority of our building these days is spec homes, the eventual homeowner has no chance to decide to keep some vegetation. Instead, the entire lot is cleared and typically the front landscape is rock, which I assume is the easiest thing to do. I don't think the default landscape should be 100% rock. I've seen some neighbors taking rock out to put in plants, and it's not an easy task. Since spec homes are being sold as soon as they are framed in, I suggest we make changes to only clear what is necessary to build and then give the homeowner options regarding selective clearing and landscaping. So, we have a lot of what I've been saying already in 17.5100, but it's not being enforced and it never will be unless we can change our clearing and building ordinance and office procedures. I have some ideas about that, but I'm out of time for today. So, just in closing, we need to leave some natural vegetation in our neighborhoods. It's something that draws people to live here and our wildlife meets it. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Dawn Williams. Dawn, do you have a public comment?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, I wasn't going to comment on what Marlene said, but I agree 100%. And I remember four or five years ago when the planning commission undertook the new shoreline master plan. Remember all that? Were you folks here then?
I was.
Came to you guys and said, hey, we're going to finally have a real meet to enforce the land clearing. And that was a total lie, okay? Nothing, it has not been followed, as far as I know. We have a guy that comes to the council meeting at least every month, and you hear him, and he's telling all the records of the things that are not being inspected, the rules are not being followed, and so on. And you have to ask the question, why? If I was that gentleman, I would take a different tact. I would, I would not be following this begging the enforcement of rules which people are sworn to enforce, ignoring them. I would not keep doing what he's doing. I'd be wasting my time. I would take it to the courts. So, those are my comments. I want to comment briefly on the light testing. I saw, I read the information. Thank you very much. I'd like to have, when you discuss the light testing, and by the way, Marlene, thank you for your ideas. They're all great. I'm going to support them if I can. On the light testing, I'd like to have you identify the light meter. You should be doing that in the test. I don't know what it was. I understand it was purchased by Mr. Brundsted, I believe, at Amazon. The other question is, I noticed obviously missing was you did not go to test the casino sign. It's not on city property. You were going to test it. What was the results? I know you tested it. What was the result of the sign of the casino when it was tested? If it was, I'm sure it was, because that was part of your objective. You were going to test the casino and Sunnyside, Sunny Beach Cafe. And, but then you ran into the sign up at the, at Galloway Bay. And, and boy, Galloway Bay exceeded the .3 lumens, okay, foot candles. And so, your group, and of course, Sunny Beach apparently exceeded everything, okay, on at least one of their screens. I think you were doing different screens. And suddenly, you folks decided that you want to have the standard, not what the internationally recognized apparently by everybody, a .3 above ambient. You wanted to go to .6. The problem is, you're making an arbitrary decision. And if you, if you, if you put that .6 into the, into the regulations, it can be challenged because there's no basis for it. It's simply arbitrary, and you can't have arbitrary regulations. So, I hope when you propose to the city that you want to have a .6 lumen above ambient requirement, as you explained fully, that there was an arbitrary decision made by three people and maybe others that is higher than the, than the, than the required standard, the recognized standard of .3, and it happens to be a number that just barely the sign that Galloway Bay squeaked by on. So, I believe you'll have a problem, but I hope you discuss that when you bring up that number, if you choose to use a .6, and you'll be discussing it today. And I'd like to also hear about the casino test, if you did it, and also, I think you need to identify the brand of light meter used. And I, good work, by the way. I'm interested to see how this goes. And I'm waiting to see the ordinance when it comes before the city council. And thank you very much for all your work. And it must have been fun going out on a cold night and playing with a light meter. Always interesting stuff to do, a little bit of science in all the work you do. So, thanks again, and I appreciate the opportunity. And again, Marlene, I want you to pursue it. And I hope you would talk to your friend about not following his same tactic. I forget, I guess his name is Mr. Lynn. His name, David Lynn. He's really on the wrong course. He needs to take a different tact if he wants to have his, he has a real, this is really in his heart, this land clearing issue. And he's just spinning his wheels with the city, and he has to take a different approach. I certainly would be if I was, had had the motivation and the, and the heartfelt feeling about landscaping that he does. So, thanks a lot, and we'll listen to your meeting, appreciate the opportunity. And thanks a lot. Also, Sarah, for letting me in. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Ann Reese. Ann, do you have a public comment?
No, I don't.
Okay, that would conclude public comment.
Okay, with that concluded, then we'll go on to the signage review of the final draft. We'll turn it over to Richard.
Could you come into the meeting first, please?
Sure.
I would not hear when you did the roll call.
Are you here, Eleanor?
I'm here now. You know.
Thanks. Okay, Richard.
So, you all have had an opportunity to read the executive summary and, and the final, what I hope is the final draft of the sign ordinance. I think that Dawn Williams brought up some legitimate issues and, and no, we did not go and check the casino sign. After evaluating the risk for serious accident on that narrow road, we decided that there's just no point. And yes, the Galloway sign exceeds the .3, but in our opinion, the three of us that went and checked sign, Greg, Rich Hartman, and myself, that, that that level of illumination was tolerable. All of our measurements are kind of approximations. The light meter depends on the distance from the sign as well as how bright the sign is. So, to cut to the chase, you all have had a chance to read the executive summary. And in the executive summary, the type of light meter that we used is included in the summary. And is there anything that anybody wants to discuss? Are we happy with someplace between .3 and .6? I'm happy with .6. What do you guys want?
I'd, I'd like to talk, but I can't see hands.
Hey, go ahead, Rich, Richard.
So, listening to the, listening to our meetings so far with public input, if there's by chance, even an ounce of chance, that we're going to have a lawsuit because we don't feel we should be following the recommended .3, then I will tell you, I cannot live with .3. It's ridiculous. And I would rather we remove the entire portion of the update of the sign code in relation to electronic reader board signs. I have no interest in putting something forward if people are going to start fighting it that haven't been part of the process. So, I'd rather stay out because .3 is ridiculous.
Eleanor, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I don't recall exactly what Dawn's, I think he said it was the national standard to have .3. And, you know, you may be right, Rich, but I'm concerned about the future. If we make it .6 as the town grows, if we need to change it, you're going to have a whole lot of lights grandfathered in. And I would rather err on the side of being conservative on a light source.
Greg? Greg?
Greg, go ahead.
Follow me. I, I've got some concern about completely abandoning any kind of, of attempt to, to regulate these electronic signs. I'm kind of where Eleanor is. And I appreciate what Dawn said. I don't think we need to get the city into any lawsuits. I still maintain that the easiest way to remedy this, this light issue is to make our constituency aware and try to get their support for at least voluntary compliance rather than, you know, forcing people to make expensive changes for the sake of the safety of the community. I think that's really fundamentally what this comes down to. I think that with the Sunnyside sign in particular, there is no question that their marquee sign, the one that's the brightest, is a safety hazard. And sometime, you know, there's a lawsuit for you right there if we don't do anything, I think. But I, I think that we need to, to, to address, like Eleanor said, the, the potential for these things contin- continuing to be more and more popular.
Richard?
So, I appreciate all of the comments so far, and I have to say that I side with Eleanor and Greg. I'm in favor of changing the draft. Remember, this is a draft ordinance, and the city council will make a final decision. So, I would recommend that we send this draft ordinance along with the executive summary and along with the PDF document that explains the whole procedure. And it's a very thorough document. I don't know how many of you have read the entire document besides just the, the, the protocol for measuring. And then it's up to the city council to say, we want .3 or we want .6. And the advantage of doing that is the city council can ask the, the Nick Byrd as an engineer, and the city could go out and buy the light meter that they're going to use, and they can have an engineer request the business to open their sign and go through the detailed protocol. And once they've done that, then the city can say, this is the standard we want. But if we, if we don't recommend something, if we leave that totally out, I think that the probability is high that more and more businesses will try to make a bigger and bigger splash. And, and you'll have to wear sunglasses in order to drive down the street at night, and that's a definite safety issue. So, I'd like to leave the ordinance as it is, and I would like to recommend a .6. And in the executive summary, I can reword that just a little bit and say that this is our suggestion. And we suggest that the city engineer go out and, and do the technically exact measurements because one foot of difference in the distance between the meter and the sign makes a pretty dramatic difference in how much light the meter measures. And let the engineer get down and say, this standard is the standard that, that, you know, that, that works. So, that's my suggestion.
Eleanor?
Then why don't we make a note that we recommend between 3 and 6 to make it obvious we'd like somebody to go out there and check with the meter that's going to be used in the future. I really feel uncomfortable putting it through with the safe, with the .6.
I, I like, personally, I like that suggestion. You recommend the international sign recommendation, which is .3, are inaccurate estimates. Better, speaking of that, mayor, make that combination based on that vision. I think that's the suggestion.
Three, four.
Are you guys out there?
No, you're really mumbling.
All right.
Well, we have to.
Is this any, is this any better right now?
Yeah, it's good. Go, go.
Two things. We went out, we did our job. .6 was the number. I, I'm not really worried about feelings right now. I'm worried about facts. We did our job. That's what we found out. Number two, you're going to have another proposal to city council. If you change this back to .3, that's going to die on the vine, and we're going to sit here and say, oh, my gosh, the city council never approves anything we push forward. So, I, I just suggest you, this whole thing is going to be flushed down the toilet if you want to stick with .3, because city council won't entertain it. I guarantee it.
Eleanor?
I, I think that I suggested that we send it through with the caveat that the, this, the national standard is .3. Some of the signs, I mean, we can make notation. Some of the signs are at .6. We would recommend somewhere in that margin. I, I was not suggesting we go through just with the .3. I would like there to be a question mark in that so we can get some thorough testing, and I'll feel comfortable with the result.
Any other comment? Hi, hi. Rich Hartman, do you want to talk again?
No, I, I'm listening, but I, I feel that I know what reality is. And I don't want something personally between .3 and .6. I wanted .1. I'll live with .6 because I was out there doing the work. But anything below .6, I cannot endorse.
Okay. I tend to agree with, with Rich Hartman. We went out, you guys went out faithfully and did the due diligence, and based upon our light meter and your analysis, the .6 was the number. We don't set what the final number is going to be because the council has a right to do that. And as long as we give them the information that it's recommended a .3, but due to our, our due diligence is, it's rich, and we, we feel the .6 is a better number. But in the executive summary, I think you could say, but the city needs to verify that. I'm not worried about lawsuits if we do a .6. We have to remember that, that the standard that these people come up with is a recommendation. They can't tell you what it's going to have to be. So, I, I guess first we need to put it to a vote. See if we got a carry for the .6, or do we have to do something else? Richard? You're muted, Richard. Richard, you're muted.
So, I want to make it clear, .3 is not a national standard. .3 is the standard that the International Sign Association set. And as Dan pointed out, that's a recommendation. And so, the city can adopt, I'm not a lawyer, but the city can adopt whatever they, they, they want to in this arena. And so, I agree with, with both Dan and Eleanor that we said, that in our executive summary, we say that .3 is the, the standard that the International Sign Association set. In our personal experience going out and measuring it in the cold and, and approximations, because I don't have a lift to get up and measure exact dimensions of the sign. I have a pretty good technique. If I know the width, I can pretty closely determine the height of the sign. So, I can get pretty close to the exact square feet of area. But the city can go out there and do that exactly and, and get the exact measurements. And that's what the International Sign Association standard is based on, is exact measurements. And so, so I'm suggesting that, that we, that we recommend to the city, .3 is the International Sign Association standard. Our experience says it may be better for the city at .6, and the city engineer should run a scientific evaluation with exact measurements. And, and then the city council can decide what the exact number is. But I think it's important that we include an EMC brightness portion in the sign ordinance. I think that's very critical.
Well, if you would like to make a motion on that, I can live with what you're saying.
Well, but there's, there's something, we, we can't tell the city what they have to do.
Right.
You cannot tell the city that they have to have the engineer go out and verify our numbers.
We can request, though.
We can suggest to the city.
But that's not in the code. But, but what we have, but what we can say is, we did the work, and this was what we came up with. Every time I've gone to a council to present something, especially nightly rentals, they ask you, they ask us, did you do this? And we can honestly say, we did this. So, if we did it and we recommend something different than that, that makes us look, not look very smart.
I think we did it to the best of our ability, and I use the "our" loosely, seeing as I didn't do it. But as Richard pointed out, that that may or may not be an accurate measure.
Well, that, I think that's up to the city to verify.
Then you broke up. I couldn't hear you.
I don't think, I think that's up to the city to verify. It, it, here's what we, we did. Here's what we recommend. I, I would, I, I think somebody in council would say, well, we need to verify this, so we're, feel comfortable, because they know we're not engineers. Richard?
So, I would like to make a motion that we, I have, I think about, I want to say that, that, that we forward this draft ordinance to the city along with the executive summary and along with the International Sign Association PDF about how to do all of these measurements. And that in our recommendation to the city, that we say just what Dan said, that, that .3 is the International Sign Association standard. Our measurement came out closer to .6. And so, we suggested to the city that, that they determine the brightness allowance that the city council is happy with. And then we send this all up to them. I can probably draft the verbiage for that during this meeting, and, and then we won't have to bring this back one more time while we're carrying on some of the other discussion, if that's what you guys would like to do. Anyway, that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman?
I would.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to make a recommendation that it, it appears that we're comfortable with what he drafted. But at this point, aren't we in a position where maybe you could take this to the mayor, have her review it without any input from her? Take this to the city council workshop on the third Monday so that they can talk to us about this. And then based on their inputs, we come back to make a final recommendation on whether we send it just like this to the city council for, for their deliberation?
Well, first, we have to be invited to the, to the workshop. I, I have.
I'm pretty sure we can get invited, but yeah, you are correct.
Yeah, and so we have to run it by the mayor first.
Correct.
So, are we asking to, are we asking them to review the total thing, the, the total package?
I, I'm asking that with all of Richard's work, that we take this to the mayor, let her review it with the chairperson. And if she has no input and is comfortable with it, that she works with city council to get it on one of their workshop Mondays. And to then have them be able to ask questions, go through this like we are so that if there's anything that they want addressed, it can be discussed there. We then bring it back to the group with their suggestions, do what we need to do, and then we're, then we've got all the parties involved moving forward. At this point, I'm, I'm very scared that by just saying, we all approve it, move it forward, it, it's not going to get through the process very easily, if at all.
I have no issue doing what you do, I, what you're saying. I think if we're going to give it to the mayor, I think we ought to give it to the mayor with the .6 and then talk to her about, well, within Richard's commentary, to know what the differences are between whatever that fine people are and what, what.
Agreed.
Okay.
Well, we have a motion on this call.
Matt?
I just, I just want to throw this out there. This is how it goes. It is recommended that EMCs not exceed 0.3 foot candles over ambient lighting conditions when measured at the recommended distance based on the EMC size. So, this is national, right? So, ambient lighting can be subjective. So, if you go to a city, the ambient lighting is going to be quite a bit brighter than it is here. So, perhaps that .6 is right for ocean shores because we don't have a ton of ambient light. So, that's just something to consider.
Richard?
So, I'd just like to point out that the, the protocol outlines how to determine ambient lighting. And this is a little bit crude, but you can see what the protocol says. And this is a little bit crude, but you can see what the protocol says is to you hold a a dark sheet. I forgot its exact measurements, 12 or 18 inches by 40 inches. And what that does is that casts a shadow on the light meter. And that is your ambient light background. So if the protocol is followed exactly, then you get a consistent measurement. And the point three above ambient becomes a pretty valid number. But what I noticed when I did these measurements that if I moved my light meter by a couple of feet and I moved it out of the building shadow and into the light cone of the corner light at Galloway, that the ambient light figure changed. And so I go back to the exact sign, square footage and area and the exact number of feet that the chart that accompanies this protocol gives it foot by foot by foot. And so one foot of difference can make a difference in how much light the light meter reads. So I don't think that ambient light is a big concern. I'll go on to say that I I like Rich Hartman's idea that that we can send this up to the mayor and and have her look at it. And if she wants to take it to the to one of the Monday meetings, that's not the city council meeting, I would be happy to attend that Zoom meeting and explain the procedure. And I volunteer myself because I think I'm the most familiar with 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 the whole protocol. And I think that Rich Hartman actually has a pretty good idea. Let the city council understand the process and then they can choose whether it's point three or point six. That's their job.
And in a workshop, they can sit there and ask us questions, get everything on, you know, out of their minds and on the table. And if there's some modifications they need to make to be good with it, back to us to make those changes, vote on it and see if we'll vote to move it forward to the council officially.
Eleanor?
I I just don't agree with this whole procedure. I think we are given a task. We ought to do the task to the best of our ability and submit it to the council. I I just think we're taking an end run around this thing, and I don't like it.
Pat?
Can you give the council a range then say when 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 you guys went out and did the measurement, you both agreed that six was the number, correct?
Six is a little bit bright, but tolerable. Three, a lot of the signs at Ocean Shores, without measuring them, but based on the measurements that I saw at Sunnyside and Galloway, point three is what most of the signs at Ocean Shores come in at. And so then, Pat, if we follow your suggestion, we're back to where we originally started and giving city council a range of point three to point six. And and I disagree with Eleanor. The city council is the one who has to make the ultimate decision. And our job is to research and explain the process. And then they make the decision. And if we give them, as as Rich Hartman suggests, if 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 we give them the opportunity to ask the questions, then I think that we can make it comfortable in all of their minds about how we reached this these numbers. And then they can make the decision. So we're not telling them what to do or giving them an opportunity. And and ultimately, they have to make the decision. That's their job.
So are you saying or not saying we should give them a range of three, point three to point six?
I I I think that it's that giving them a range gives us a good starting place. And if we if we word the the suggestion correctly, that makes it clear to the city council that our experience indicates this is where we think the number should be, but we're not engineers. And perhaps an engineer should decide what the, you know, what the final number is. And they may want to to hire a light engineer to come out and 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 make that determination. And that then circumvents any of the discussions about guesstimation. If the light engineer does it, then that's, you know, that's a scientific result.
So then we're back to why can't we say that the standard appears to be point three? And some of this science, to the best of our ability, we measured at point six?
Exactly, point five seven, but that's that's nitpicking.
Greg?
I have a question, though. This I have a question. This isn't, choose words correctly, Richard. It's not the standard, it's the recommended. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a it's a recommendation.
We can't say we can't say standard. It's a recommendation from this group.
Correct. That's correct.
Greg?
I recommend that we report what we did and reference the international quote standard of point three and simply indicate that based on our review, we think point six is tolerable and recognize that this issue is just one of a a whole package of signing ordinances. That we're we're spending an awful lot of time on one piece of the entire package that started with A-frames, for heaven's sakes. So we've done our job. There is a protocol for forwarding the planning commission material forward. It never has worked, so maybe we need to do something different, like send it to a work study group before it goes to city the city council, which is okay. But let's let's figure out what that protocol is because we've got two other issues here that we're supposed to be talking about that ultimately, we're going to presumably do the same thing with. Let's stick to the standards, the protocol standards that we have and simply say about this particular issue that the international reference point, if you will, is point three. After doing a field review, the planning commission recommends a tolerance of point six or less. And be be done with it.
I agree. Absolutely.
I agree also.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to appeal to the commissioners that I've obviously tried to do a lot of work, speaking to different individuals about how the planning commission becomes more successful with their tasks to actually get them approved. Because the very, very short time I've been on the board, I listened to all of you mention that nothing ever gets approved. So by us taking our best work product, reviewing it with the mayor, getting her input, then allowing, after we've listened to her input, getting it on the city council's work study Monday to get their input and maybe make changes they are asking for, getting it back to us to finish it up and then officially send it forward, I guarantee is the first best chance we have at starting to get our work products approved by city council.
I don't agree with that. Let me let me say something first, Richard.
I don't either.
Um, I think we need to go with strength. We did the work to come up with a point six. I don't think we do anything less than point six. I think you referenced the point three, but it's a reference. And then it's up to the city to decide if point six is the right number. They know we're not engineers. They know we're not light specialists. But we did it with a light meter and you guys did it with a light meter and three of you did it. And you came up with a point six. I think we go with strength and say, that's our number. It isn't from three to six, it's six. Or otherwise, why do you work?
Right. And I think as long as you reference the point three, it lets them know that there's there's a point three to point six that they can choose within. And I say, let's go with that and move on. But we do have a a motion on the floor that we need to either act on or retract and.
The the motion is seconded, so I can withdraw the motion at this point. But I also want to make another comment. And I listened to the city council meeting last night and they were discussing the the three-person committee discussed the homeless location. And over and over and over again, the planning commission got got profuse kudos for the amount of work that has gone into that portion of of the comprehensive plan. I think that we achieved a great deal of credibility based on what I heard in the in the the city council meeting last night.
Okay, what was the motion?
So the 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 motion, the the original motion, and I I'm going to remake the motion now. Let me see. Give me just a second here to organize my thought. I move that we send this draft ordinance forward just as it is written, along with my sidebar note. And I will include a paragraph at the top of the executive summary that says something to the effect that the International Sign Association, their standard says point three foot candles. Our experience going out with a light meter and make taking our measurements indicates point six is an acceptable. I like Greg's term. Greg, what what word did you use? A tolerable?
Acceptable is fine, but you know, it was really what we thought was an acceptable tolerance.
Okay, an acceptable tolerance. And and we include that in the executive summary and and then let the city council deal with it. And if they want to send it back and have us do some more work on it, that's a decision that they can make in in our executive summary. We can say if you want further, you know, if you want the planning commission to do further work, give us some guidance.
I don't think you do that.
Okay.
I don't think you do that.
Okay, that I I defer to your to your experience.
Yeah, let let them ask us to do some further.
Okay.
You know, I will talk to the mayor. I'll send it to the mayor and probably Scott Anderson in in for their comments and say, you know, and see if they want to have a discussion and see what the mayor wants to do with it. But but, you know, I I I'm not opposed at all to to go into their to their study session with this and and get in comments. You know, that could be a good thing. But so why don't we proceed down that that road and see where it gets us? But I I don't think we ask them, we we just present it. This is this is what we've got.
Okay.
Here is what we've got. This is what we came up with. You got any question?
Yep.
I I like that approach. Do you want me to add a paragraph at the top of the executive summary that says that that point three and and we find point six to be acceptable, an acceptable tolerance? Do you want me to add that paragraph and send it to you? And then you're going to forward it all up to the mayor?
What's the what's the planning commission say?
I'm all in favor of that, and and that's my motion.
Great, okay. Um, so are you making a motion that we do the point three being the standard? We think point six is acceptable and and sending it through that way? Or are you talking about sidestepping the normal route and taking it to the mayor and asking for opinion? Which is it?
As long as we as long as we put that point three is recommended, not the standard, because it's not the standard.
Right, exactly.
So I still haven't had the question answered. Are we talking about going ahead and doing this in the normal way? Or are we talking in this motion about sidetruck in the normal system and taking it to the mayor?
So I have always assumed that the normal way was that the work we do goes to the mayor and the mayor takes it to the council. So I don't think we're doing anything out of the ordinary. That's the way it's always worked. We work for the mayor.
No, but the people were talking about taking it to a study session on.
The mayor can decide whether it goes to a study session or not. And when Dan talks to the mayor, you know, Dan Dan can say, if you want us to participate in a study session and answer city council questions, that we're happy to do that. And and I I I very cheerfully volunteer my time to participate in that discussion if that's what the mayor wants.
It just seems to me like this is a small part of the whole. And we're making a mountain out of a molehill and spending a huge amount of time on something that once the background work was done, should have been fast.
Well, so there's a motion and a second on the table. And and Eleanor, I hear what you're saying. We are spending a lot of time on this. I expected this to take five minutes. And I don't know how much time we've been into it, but a long time. So so anyway, there's a motion and a second on the table.
Well, I still don't feel like my question has been answered to my satisfaction. Is this going to go the normal route? Or are we taking this one portion to the mayor?
No, we're taking the whole, the whole, everything we've done, we're taking to the mayor. And but on my, when I sent it to her, my email will be, I will say, if we would be happy to answer any questions you have. And we would also be more than happy to go to the council study session if you think that's the right way to go or whatever.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I was hearing Rich say he wanted this particular session section to be taken to the mayor and all the council.
No, I want the entire new sign ordinance to be taken to them because it's going to be a big fight for them to chew off. And I know there's going to be a lot of questions and I'd like for it to actually be approved. So no, I don't want this one section micro, you know, put on stage. I want the whole new proposed sign codes to be put on stage.
Okay.
And and I I thought that that's what we were always talking about. We were not talking about just this 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 EMC section. We're talking about the whole sign code. The reason we're not discussing the rest of the sign code is we already decided at the last meeting that all the rest of the sign code was good to go.
This only came up when we started talking about ambient light.
That's the only thing we needed to finally do a final approval on. The rest, it was already approved.
Okay.
Okay, so we got a we got a we got a motion on the table. We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rich? Rick? Hartman?
Yes, I'm an aye.
Okay.
Are there any noes?
I'm a reluctant aye.
Funny, I didn't I didn't hear.
Yeah, do I have to vote? Can I just abstain?
You can abstain.
All right, I abstain.
Okay. It's six, the one abstention, so it passes. Okay, Pat, I kind of I kind of landed this on you. If it's okay on the landscaping, I think you were the best guy for the job.
Can you repeat that?
I I on the agenda, I I put that you were going to be the lead on the landscaping.
Oh, I am. Okay, that was good to know.
Yeah, because I I think you're the best guy for the job since how you do that all the time down there.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what you want to talk about or what I input, but why don't you give us some of your thoughts?
Um, okay, so the landscape side of this thing. Hearing public comments, I agree to some degree with with what was said. I know that it's been pretty loose getting up to this point as far as what what's basically written and what's been required. There hasn't been much. Um, there hasn't been much on the side of the contractors to be required to do much in the way of a landscape, and there's been no enforcement of it. So um, that said, um, we probably should understand what is in writing and then start start from that point and work our way forward. I do know that that there is a three to one replacement of trees that come down. It doesn't specify what type of tree that you have to put back. Uh, doesn't say that it has to be indigenous to the area. Uh, also doesn't um necessarily say that it needs to be any type of tree of significant. So um, you know, and then there's the other issue that bothers me as a builder. Um, I know that some of the trees that that the city would like to see saved sometimes come down in windstorms. And so there is, in my opinion, there's some liability that could be had uh for the city by requiring somebody to leave the big spruce tree and then the next big storm that blows over on their house. Um, so I think those are the things we want to address. We also want to address, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want everything back into its natural state? Personally, I don't think so. Um, but again, that's something we all need to discuss. Most of the trees, uh, the the spruce trees that that grow and get big, they get diseased and they have heart rot. Um, I know that from a lot of experience of clearing lots and taking trees down and watching trees blow over on people's houses. So from my standpoint, that's that's where I am. Um, I would like to see something that's a little more comprehensive than, you know, just clear off a little piece of your lot, build your house and leave the rest of it natural. Uh, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a good idea, and I don't think it's conducive to the way things look, but that's just me. So I think what I'd like to do, if I'm gonna take the lead on this thing, is kind of open up discussion with everybody that's on the commission here and see what your ideas are for what you think landscape should be on new construction.
Right?
Well, I I recommend we start with what the existing ordinance is. Marlene seemed to have a pretty good synopsis of it. And um, I think that would be a natural place for us to start. See if there's a problem in the the existing ordinance. Uh, and and again, like we have with lighting and everything else, make whatever recommended recommended changes we think uh the city council should consider.
Uh, Richard?
Oh, I think that Greg, uh, Greg is and Pat are both right. Uh, um, we have a a pretty good ordinance already, and enforcement has always been the problem. Uh, but uh, I went down and took pictures of the house here by the community club that the tree fell on and and what I know, uh, and Greg's a forester, he knows this probably better than I do, that trees do better when there are a group of trees. And when you leave one or two trees, they become very, very vulnerable to wind and and disease damage. Um, uh, and so so I know there's a lot of passion in the city about leaving the trees on the lot. Uh, but on these small lots, if you're trying to build a house on a small lot, on a normal-sized lot, there's not much room left for trees to to be on the perimeter. Uh, um, and so I don't think that 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 demanding that trees remain may not be in the best interest of the homeowner, because who's gonna pay the damage when that tree falls on your house? And ultimately, it's going to.
Okay, Tanya?
Thank you, Dan. Um, I would like to request that we keep the conversation based on facts and not make blanket statements that aren't exactly true or proven. Um, and and I'm specifically requesting that we don't say that all trees are gonna fall down and crush a home or that there's no room left on a lot for native vegetation when it's absolutely not true. There are trees all over this peninsula that are not falling down on anyone's house. There's also a bunch of lots with homes and garages that have a very nice native vegetation buffer around them. So I think that we need to kind of tailor it back and ground it in reality. I'm not saying that we can't landscape. I'm not saying that we should advocate only native vegetation. I'm saying that we need to avoid um throwing out the native vegetation in our conversation.
Agreed.
Yeah?
Um, if you guys read seventeen point five zero point one hundred clearing and grading, that would be a great place for us to start, because that's pretty much, it's what Alicia sent us in uh the links. It's the middle link of what she sent out last week. And so that kind of gives us the baseline of what exists today. And then I think that would be a good spot to start with and then work forward.
Okay.
So I can cut and paste it if it's easier for you guys to read it. Um, but it's 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 there. And so um, that would be, give us a good starting point. And we can, we can go from there if that works for you guys.
I like that.
Okay. So do you, how do you want to, how do you want to do this? Has anybody read that?
Yes.
Okay. So you want to just start with this, kind of go over it and then see if we want to start trying to punch holes in it or add to it?
Yes.
Okay. I've got it up, so I can kind of go through it. Uh, it starts out with clearing of vegetation and grading. A regrading of the land surface shall not be allowed except when conducted pursuant to and in conformance with a grading and clearing permit issued by the city. We pretty much all know about that. At the time of clearing slash grading permit application, a plan for landscaping shall be submitted to the city that clearly indicates the applicant's plan for meeting the landscape and erosion prevention requirements of this section. Plans shall be to scale, indicate the number, there are the location of structures and the location of all existing significant trees. If a portion of the property is to be left in its natural state and that natural state is left undisturbed, that shall so be noted on the plan. Um, Alicia, are you still on here?
I am.
So I don't, are we doing that now? I don't believe we are, are we?
I asked them to do that. They don't always provide it after I've looked at the clearing. The clearings generally are for the contractor to do his job and then actually required to do the follow-up. However, that doesn't always happen when they submit for their building permits.
Okay. Anyway, it says the clearing and grading permit shall be issued only upon approval of the landscape plan as meeting these requirements and condition on implementation of the plan is approved. So it seems like to me that the burden of that would be if they don't submit this stuff to whoever is going to go out and approve the clearing and grading permit, then it shouldn't go any farther forward, correct? Anyway, okay.
I agree.
Okay. The landscaping of single-family and duplex dwellings, the plan shall provide assurance that the following requirements are met. A portion of the property not occupied by structures shall be left in its natural state or shall be aesthetically treated with plants, shrubs, trees, or other forms of landscape materials. The plantings used will be those native to the area or those which are suited to survival in the climate and soil conditions of ocean shores. That portion of the property not occupied by structures shall have a minimum ground cover adequate to control soil erosion and prevent the soil or sand from blowing or washing into other properties or streets. The plan shall include management measures to prevent erosion on all areas of the site where soil is exposed during construction or grading with appropriate temporary means based on the seasonal and site character considerations. So it does say that that to use natural, but it doesn't require it. That's the way I read it. Anybody disagree?
That isn't happening, is it?
Pardon me?
That is not actually happening. I see so many lots that I cleared end to end down to the sand.
It's it's pretty much not happening much at all.
Well, I guess the question we should ask is why isn't it happening?
So just from my experience, I don't think there's an enforcement mechanism to make it happen.
May I say something?
Sure.
Yes.
We had almost four hundred clearing permit applications come through last year. I'm one person. I'm trying to enforce. I'm trying to review. I'm trying to do site visits, and I have other work on my desk as well. I am so overwhelmed. That is one of the reasons I put in my retirement notice as of March first, and I will be retired after March thirty first.
Alicia, this isn't pointed at you at all. It is just, it's a city thing. And we all know that you're beyond overwhelmed with what you're doing, and we appreciate all you do.
And I appreciate that comment. Thank you, Pat.
So Alicia, who is actually tasked with enforcing this?
You're talking to her.
Okay.
Got the impossible job.
So I mean, if you guys put this in perspective, four hundred clearing permits for one person to handle, that's, I mean, that means five days a week. She's got to be out looking at two or three lots per day. And that's not, and then she would have to look at and approve or disapprove landscape plans and then go back and revisit the lots to make sure that those things were done. Nobody can do that.
Well, this is not a blame game. It's what's, I guess what I'm trying to point out is what's the point in having these very good ordinances and rules? If we don't have a way to follow up on them, then we're wasting a whole lot of time. And I think this is a hugely important issue.
I I agree with Eleanor. I think it's very possible we don't need more guidance and rules. We need staffing to be able to actually carry out the rules and enforce the rules that are already there.
That is a good comment, and I I agree with that myself.
So it sounds to me like we've probably got a good base in place already. The question is, how do we get enforcement before we take down every living thing on this peninsula, which distresses me daily?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are we in a position where we, as a planning commission, would throw back this one task at the mayor and council and say, we really don't have anything to move forward on until you start giving city staff the appropriate personnel to actually enforce the laws that we already have on the books?
We have the right to to go back and say, we we don't think there's any changes needed at this time. It's seen and and say something like, it seems to be, the issue is is enforcement of the current policy. We can't tell the city how to do it. They need to hire people, yada, yada, yada. So, you know, our hands are tied. We can say, we're done with this task. I mean, we can do that. But before we do that, is there anything? My question would be, is there anything we would like to add in addition to? Or we just do like Rich said, send it back and send and tell the current code is enforced, we see no opportunities to uh enhance the current code?
Yeah, why waste your time?
Exactly.
So I I do see opportunity to improve. I don't think it's anything major. I just think that we should emphasize um some kind of enforcement mechanism, some kind of penalty for lack of compliance. And again, you guys, this is my my personal bent, and I try to keep it in check and not let it um become a soapbox. But this peninsula is an absolute natural wonder. And what makes it that way is all of the natural elements that we have here. And I think as a Realtor and as a property owner and as someone that enjoys living here, if we can't retain some of the shrubs and just the native vegetation that supports a healthy ecosystem on this peninsula, we are losing a treasure.
Daily.
Yeah, rapidly. And um, I think it's really important that we emphasize the importance of that. And I think the code that we have is is pretty solid, but it's not as prescriptive or supportive of keeping native vegetation as it could be. And I think as a as a developer, um, the easiest thing to do is just leave some shrubs along the border of a lot, you know, leave a ten-foot buffer at the street. It doesn't really cost them much. They might have to hire someone to prune the myrtle back instead of just whacking it with their um big machine. But the code could sort of support that. Uh, so I I see a lot of room for improvement, and again, nothing major, but I I would like to make some recommendations and emphasize the importance of native vegetation. And also, I think this idea that we don't have any specific requirements about what needs to be replaced is a little too loose. So I'd like to see us, um, you know, where it is removed, specify what needs to be put back in.
Yeah?
So so the only, I I don't disagree with you, Tonya. Uh, the problem is, is we can't enforce what's there now. And so anything you add to it is just gonna exacerbate the whole issue. So I think we're probably best off sending this thing back to the mayor and saying, until we have the resources to be able to enforce any kind of a landscape ordinance, there's no point in spending a bunch of time on it.
I agree. I agree that we won't get another opportunity to tackle this. And at the rate of clearing and developing that we're facing, it's 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 quickly becoming a lost cause.
Could I comment?
Oh, Richard's first.
So I, Pat Brunstad, I think is absolutely correct. We have a good ordinance. Uh, um, and the ordinance has been unenforceable for the five years that I've been here, simply because of lack of manpower. And that's a, that's a budget issue, and it's actually a city income issue. Um, and and so until that changes, uh, anything that we add to this ordinance is not going to accomplish anything, because there's no enforcement mechanism. And on the eighteenth, what little enforcement mechanism was available disappears. Uh, um, so I think that we just need to send this back and say, we have a good ordinance. Now, uh, when the city has the uh, the the resources to enforce, then the ordinance will become an effective ordinance. Uh, and until then, the city has to decide what they're going to do. Uh, it's out of our hands. I don't see any changes that need to be made. The city also has documents, the buffer zone, I don't remember its exact title, but the city has a buffer zone document that that uh gives homeowners and developers a a a hands-on document that makes several recommendations about what types of vegetation to to replace on lots. And even though it's part of the shoreline management effort, uh, the buffer zone goes all the way out to the street. And so so there are plants in that document that are appropriate to to plant in the very middle of the peninsula. Uh, and it gives, provides a guide of what kinds of things can be planted. And all of the vegetation in that guide uh is either named or recommended by the Department of Ecology. I know that all to be true, because I wrote the document, gave it to the city, and gives it out to the to to the builders.
Okay, it's Greg first and then Eleanor.
For those of you who have not.
For those of you who have not been on the planning commission as long as Eleanor and I have been, I think it's a cop out to say that we're not going to take on anything because there's no enforcement. That is a problem across the board. That the mayor gave us an assignment, that she said that the community council was really excited about acting on. This is one of them. I think we should do our due diligence as good staff people, review the ordinance like we started to do today, satisfy ourselves that it's good or good enough, and return that, a, a document to the mayor or the city council that says, we've reviewed it. We think it's great. It seems to be an enforcement issue and wrap it up.
I would like to send it back with a suggestion of some pretty heavy duty fines for people that go in and deliberately take out all the, the greenery when they know they're not supposed to do that. It's clear on the paperwork they get. And the only way we're going to stop it is have financial hardship caused by them ignoring the rules that are in place. I'd say we work on it and we send it back and include a fine for those that deliberately ignore the ordinance.
Richard?
A question for Alicia. Isn't there already a fine built into the existing ordinance?
Um, there's a fine that we've been using. I believe it's under section seven or eight in the code. I don't remember the exact numbers. We, we did not go forward with what it says in the code as a thousand dollar fine to start with because we had not been enforcing a fine in the past. So we started at $200. If they are first offense, then they're fined, a $200 fine. If they have a second offense, then it goes to the 1,000 as it is written in the code.
200 is not enough to stop them.
Mr. Chairman?
That was a number that the mayor came up with a couple of years ago. And we started with that and we can do 1,000, but we haven't been doing 1,000 because they're first offenders. I have a guy, I wrote a letter to last week that cleared his property and didn't have a, a permit. He found out that we require a permit after to remove the, the brush without a permit. And he didn't realize that up here it's different, so he'd have to have one. So I'm going to have to find him $200 to start with because he didn't know. So that's mostly the reason why we started with the 200 instead of the 1,000 because most people don't even know that they have to have a permit.
Oh, I, I'm not sure I buy that.
Mr. Chairman?
Was it Greg? Were you next? Okay, Richard again.
So I'm sorry, Rich, Rich Hartman, go ahead.
I've been told by another city official that one of the ways they've gotten through this process is to have a landscape bond.
Rich, we really can't understand you. You need to quit smoking.
Okay.
Let's try it this way. Does that work?
Yeah, much better.
Okay. Another city has something they call landscape bond. And if the builder doesn't do or the homeowner doesn't do what they're supposed to do, the city is able to go collect off the bond. And you, you make the bond for the dollar amount that you think's necessary. If it's $3,000, then it's a $3,000 bond. If they never do what they say they're going to do, the city can go grab the money and do it for them. Or whatever, however it works out.
Sounds good to me.
Rich?
So, uh, I absolutely, uh, uh, like what Rich Hartman just said about the landscape bond. I think that the existing ordinance is a, is a great ordinance. I don't see very much room for improvement. But I would suggest when we send this back that we include Rich Hartman's idea about a landscape bond. I think that solves a, a great deal of the problem. But I also have a question for Alicia. If a property owner has a large spruce tree that is diseased, do they need a permit to take the tree down? And, and, and who makes the decision that the tree is diseased enough to warrant removing it?
I think I caught most of that. If there's a diseased tree, they have the arborist come out and tell them that it is diseased. They show me paperwork that says that the arborist did say that it is diseased. I allow them to take it down, but I do ask them to
You're cutting out.
Don't, then.
You cut out it, I do ask them.
Okay, I do ask them to have an arborist look at it. And if the arborist says that it is diseased, I ask them to at least get a permit because if they don't, then the, the neighbors are going to come in and say, why is this guy cutting this tree down? Did he get a permit? No, he didn't get a permit. It's diseased. Well, why is he getting it? To take it down without a permit. I have to get a permit to clear my lot. So, you know, I, I get it from both sides. And a comment on, um, the getting a, a bond for clearing, that's going to require another person to look at the bond to make sure that it's correct and how effective is it? And how long is it good for? And how are they following the, the guidelines in that? You, there's going to be more work for staff to. That's just my opinion.
Having, having worked in construction where we had to get a lot of bonds, they were paid in the, you know, what? And in a community like this where, where people building homes, I don't think that's too practical myself. What about you, Pat? What do you think?
I think, I think bonding is going to be tough, especially, you know, in some, in some of the more high-end areas, bonding probably makes sense because it's a little bit more sophisticated homeowner, buyer. But here, I think that's going to be tough. I think, I still think it's, it, it boils down to staff, resources. Not, it's, it's just a matter of putting in place people or mechanisms that, that make this happen. It, it just, that, that's my thought.
Greg?
No, it occurs to me that we put some language in the comp plan about a, even though I wasn't crazy about it personally, but about landscape and slash architectural design committees. The idea would be that they were staffed with people like us who are volunteers. And maybe that's what we might look into offering for a way for the city to overcome its staffing issues and see if there's a willingness to create that kind of oversight constituent committee to help enforce the laws, the rules, the ordinances that are already on the books.
Could be like crime, crime watch, only we could call it landscape watch.
Well, it, it's the same concept. I, I was lukewarm to it, but Eleanor remembers it. I don't know who else was involved. Dan, you were involved, but those, the language is still in the comp plan and it, it would actually might even be relevant in the next topic that we're supposed to talk about today if we ever get around to it. But, you know, the city is strapped. And this enforcement issue has been the problem ever since I ever got involved with the planning commission. And, uh, you know, the mayor made a, a modification. Reese, I guess this, two years ago, they added another half person to enforcement. And yet I heard that half person, all they do is run around and try to find out people who are violating the renter or, yeah, our vacation rentals policy, which I find offensive, not the politi, well, at any rate, you know me, I support that vacation rental policy, not the exclusion of it. So at any rate, this, this enforcement issue is sort of a dead horse. And if we can't come up with some creative ways to help the city overcome that, like with a volunteer oversight board, I don't see how we're ever going to get beyond these kinds of problems.
I, I guess the question would be from a city's point of view, do I want Joe Public making decisions that are law decisions, are covenant kind of decisions, ordinance decisions? When you've got such a diversified community, you've got extremes on both ends. So I would think they're going to be very apprehensive about that. I, you know, we can, we can recommend something like that. But I, I, I can't remember who said, I, I think we send this ordinance back and say, looks good to us for the time being. We, the problem we see is there's no, there is, Alicia, don't take offense. There, there is a lack of personnel to enforce the current code. So until that's done, we don't see any advantage of, of doing anything else. I, I don't know how to say it exactly, but it, it's just, we need to clean up what we got and then move forward. And, and, and we could say that once, once current codes are being enforced, we'd be happy to take a little look at it. Eleanor?
My concern is, and, and I kind of feel like you do, you want to say, either enforce it or don't waste my time. The problem is every single day that passes without enforcement is another day of trees and shrubbery gone, loss of habitat, tough for animals, destroyed forever. I, I just think we have to make it more critical, a more critical statement than that.
Greg?
I agree with Eleanor. And if we, if we want to put some teeth into it, we should give our, include in our report the reference to the shoreline management plan. When this kind of stuff happens along freshwater white ways, which is, you know, just a piece of the picture, it is a flat-out violation to the shoreline management plan, which is a federal offense. So, um, you know, if, I think that's, that if we want to add some teeth to it, let's remind them about what the shoreline management plan said.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, please.
When they clear on a shoreline, I do contact the Department of Ecology and have them come out and look at it. And we go, we talk about it, we discuss it. And they are given guidelines on what they are required to do to replace the vegetation on the shoreline. Whether or not they do that, I have done a couple of follow-ups on, on one in particular over on Mount Olympus, I think it was. They had planted, it was surviving, it was looking good. Ecology said this is great. But I haven't had a lot of complaints that people are clearing down to the shoreline. I had one the other day. I went out and investigated. It was a waste of my time basically because they hadn't cleared down to the shoreline. A tree limb had broken off, fallen into the water. They were going to have it removed. They want to keep the vegetation on the shoreline. I talked with the owner. She said the owner before them had trimmed it down. It was down to about a foot tall, but there was still vegetation there. And they were going to allow it to grow back up. They had been allowing it to grow back up and they want to keep it there. And I told them that they can trim it so they can see the water, which is something that ecology allows. And they can have a four-foot path down to the dock that they have there, but that's all they're allowed to have. They want to keep it, but the previous owner had trimmed it down. So, you know, I do, when I have a complaint, I do have ecology come out and look at what's there and what needs to be done. So it's not that we're just ignoring it. We're, we're trying to make things happen. It's just very difficult, me being one person, not being able to get out there and look at everything that is happening in this community. And I appreciate all of you guys looking into that, but you know, I, I, like I said, I'm overwhelmed with this job right now and it's getting worse. I've got three, four conditional use permits that came in this weekend, a, a rezone that I'm going to have to talk to you guys about later too. So I'm just overwhelmed.
Okay, Pat?
So I think, I think we've got to step back and see what the intent was of the mayor giving us this ordinance to, to take a look at. I've had conversations with the mayor about this before I was on the finding commission. And the intent is, is to stop people from clearing a lot, lot line to lot line, front to back, and just covering it with red rock or gravel or doing nothing. That, that was the, the intent. The intent is also to make ocean shores look a little nicer. And that's why I was pretty excited about this landscape ordinance coming around. Turns out that the landscape ordinance that exists pretty much covers everything that we want it to cover. I would suggest that we all give this thing another two weeks so that we all can look at it, digest it, make sure that it has everything in it that we want in it. And maybe next meeting, have a such, have a discussion of what we might want to add into it. I don't think there's anything we want to take away from it. And then also put some ideas together, what we might take up to the mayor that would suggest some sort of penalties to homeowners slash contractors that don't adhere to this.
Second.
Oh, that, was that a motion?
Make it a motion. I'll second it.
All right, that's the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Great. So it passes. So why don't, is sure jot down some of your thoughts. So, and suppose we could send them to me if you, if you've got some thoughts and you want to run them down and, and maybe we can consolidate them and, and get them out to everybody and we can go from there or just, we'll discuss it next meeting. Either way, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so the next, the next, uh, topic was building standards. And that's actually in the comp plan under section 4.9, action plan housing. We just wrote one quick standing and it says, residential design standards for new construction establishing roof pitch and front porch design standards to minimize maintenance and improve durability of the houses. And this, if I remember right, this is a big one for Greg. Design standards.
Well, it, it was a biggie for Jeff Daniel and I back in 2017. And we always wanted to get into the weeds, so to speak, but Linda kept us kind of at the 10,000-foot level and that led to what we wrote in the, in the comp plan. It's kind of the placeholder for us to ultimately come back to and potentially revise ocean shores building design standards. We recognize that we couldn't get into changing building codes or anything like that. We also recognized at the time that it was politically incorrect, if not offensive, to make this look like we're targeting manufactured homes. It's contrary to state law to, to do that. So the euphemism, if you will, is building design standards. And, uh, I had previously made recommendations about preferred roof pitches. about preferred roof pitches, the the porches over entries, uh covered entries. And uh we talked a bit about foundations being some specification for the kinds of foundations that were required, but it didn't really go very far. So that's what I recollect about what we went through back in twenty seventeen.
So Greg, I have to ask, do you want to take the lead on this one?
Well, if you want me to, I can. Uh, I'll just start with, I I sent you a copy of what uh Jeff had put together that he he'd picked up from other communities to get us going on it. And I'd I'd start with that, have everybody review it. And um like we just did with the landscaping, um you know, do our homework and come back and and make recommendations about what kinds of changes we want to make to the existing standards. And I don't know exactly what word to use when I said standards because, like I said, we're not going to mess with the uniform building code. We're talking about uh uniform building standards, if you will, uh for future construction.
Eleanor?
Um, just as an emphasis, if you recall, Greg, when we talked back then, if you're having a stick built house, you have to have a foundation. And I think manufactured homes, we discussed having the the um the same rules and regulations for them because I have seen them on posts and strapped down, but not on a foundation. And I I think all need to be on a foundation. So for those that weren't present when we discussed that, that may be one thing to to really look out for when you're going through the spec.
Once, once again, I agree, I agree with, I agree with you, Eleanor. Um, we did talk about that. So I'm just saying that based on where we're at right now, it's a new topic. I think we all need to do our homework with what's what um the existing rules are. I don't even know what the exact, maybe Alicia can point us in the right direction about what's the current uh overriding ordinance. And take what Jeff, read what what Jeff put together. I gave that to Dan uh just the other day. Uh, let's read that and then come back in two weeks and and go through and itemize things like you just brought up that we want to consider for recommended changes.
Sounds good.
Richard?
I have a a question that Pat may know the answer to. Somebody may know the answer to. The question is, how does one attach a manufactured home uh to an existing uh cement foundation? Uh, if you're building a stick house, uh you 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 drill a hole through the through the 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 footplate and you bolt it down. But how do you do that in a manufactured home? Uh, and so my question really revolves around if we demand that it be placed on a foundation, is that feasible for the builder?
They use strap, they use straps, Rich. Let's let's kind of get into the weeds here. Get into the weeds.
Great, great.
They're already required to be on a foundation.
What we learned, when we went through this, if I remember right, each manufactured home builder has a recommendation tie down procedure.
Right, right.
What what happens after that is we require them to put up some sort of foundation and make it look like they have a foundation, but it's really not a foundation.
Right, right. So again, given where we're at with this topic, I don't think anybody's done any research outside of me sending Dan uh what we'd done back in twenty seventeen. Given that the hour of the day, I recommend we do some homework, come back in two weeks after reading um the existing literature and make our recommendations.
Yeah?
Um, I think that's going to be really easy to do. We just need to call McGivney at the building department and ask them what's required for holding down a mobile home. I know it's, I know it's not a foundation. It's a concrete strip or a pad with hold downs in it and straps that are attached to it. The what they do around the perimeter of that mo- mobile home is called skirting, uh excuse me, manufactured home. So whether, and I I do believe we could put some language in that would require the skirting to be some sort of a concrete or concrete block uh type material, so it does look like a a permanent foundation under it. But I know that the building code doesn't require that.
Can I, can I comment?
Okay. Alicia?
We four different zoning manufactured homes.
Can you say that again?
Say that again? There's, there's actually um seventeen point sixteen point oh seven oh gives you requirements for a manufactured home that is placed in an R one zone, that it's not a manufactured home zone. They have to meet certain criteria, which is more stringent than the other three zones. The R six A, six B, and six C also give some guidance on how to place a manufactured home in different areas. Um, some of those don't require a foundation or even a tie down. But they're because they're different zones, different requirements in different zones.
So can we get copies? Can can we figure out how all the planning commission members can can read that material before next or next meeting and you leave?
I can send a link to each of those zonings, yes.
I think that's what we need to study uh before we dive any farther into this.
Eleanor, then Richard.
Um, I think I relayed this several years ago that we took a walk past a site where a manufactured home was being placed in an R one district. And all we saw were stands that the mobile home sat on. It was not a concrete slab. It was sitting on stands and tie downs, which doesn't sound too stable to me. So I I really am interested in seeing the different regulations.
Richard?
I read through now that Greg spent, uh and and I agree with almost everything in there. I have a question, and it's about the roof pitch. Uh, and and my my understanding of roof pitch is has more to do with shedding snow uh than anything else. And so so why would uh our building standards specify roof pitch? I'm I'm looking for some insight so so that I understand the problem better. So when I research, I can I can focus. Can you, what's roof about?
Too far down into the deep, the weeds for me right now.
Well, that's the Pat answered that.
So roof pitch is is subjective. Um, three twelve is probably the smallest pitch that you put a composition roof on. Um, if you go to a two twelve or a one twelve, it's going to require a main roof, which manufactured home probably isn't going to have that. But we build modern, contemporary looking homes that my personal home has a two twelve pitch roof with a metal roof on it. Um, it wouldn't look the same if I did it at a three twelve or a four twelve. So I don't know that pitch really should come into play on this thing. Understand why you would want it to because then it creates some height issues with with mobilizing a manufactured home. But um I don't think it's a place we want to go.
So what I hear in you saying is is we don't want to specify roof pitch in a building standards.
No, I don't, I I don't believe you do because um there's there's some very expensive homes that have small roof pitches. So I I don't think I would, I don't think I would go there.
Your your explanation makes good sense to me, and I am happy with with not specifying roof pitch. Uh, everything else that I saw in Greg's email looked pretty uh uh um uh pretty doable. Uh, and as Alicia pointed out, that the skirting in some zones requires a concrete appearing skirting. Uh, and in other places, maybe uh one of those plastic lattice work skirting uh is acceptable depending on the zoning. Did I understand that correct, Alicia?
That is correct, that I I actually said that the zone does not, some of the zones do not require them to be placed on a foundation at all or tied down. On the R six A, which is um, let me get back to that one, which is identified as recreational vehicle and trailer. You can put a fifth wheel on a lot that's in division twelve, and you can put it there with no tie downs whatsoever. So it just depends on what zone you're in, what it's requiring.
Okay.
Okay, are we kind of settled that we're going to do our homework and come back to to this?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So I don't think we need to have a motion or anything on that. So let's just, you know, uh, so Greg's going to take the lead. Uh, do we have any planning commission reports? I don't know. Okay, new business? Well, I I have, we don't have any new business at this point in time.
I do.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I do. I have an application for a rezone. And according to the code, the rezones are heard by the planning commission.
Okay.
Towards municipal code seventeen fifty one, there has to be a public hearing set before the planning commission. Um, I'm I'm probably not going to be here long enough to go through it with you unless you can do it next week. So I'm going to set up as much of it as I can before I go. And hopefully, the person coming in behind me will be able to follow up on it.
I'd say let's get her input before she goes anywhere.
Yeah. I will do as much of it, like I said, as I can. I'm I'm trying to work while I'm going through this meeting right now on a staff report and whatnot that needs to be done, public hearing notices and whatnot. Um, and I will try to get as much done as I can. Guys, you guys will have to hold the public hearing, probably without me, um unless they bring me back off of vacation next week, a couple of weeks from now. Um, but other than that, I I some of you have been through this before, so you know how it goes. You look at the the um information and what they want to do and what's in the area and whether or not it should be allowed. And then you send a recommendation to council, to the city clerk. And the city clerk then um schedules a public hearing with the council. And the council takes action after that. So uh there's two public hearings, which the first one is the initial public hearing with the the planning commission. The second one is the one that the council will take action on.
Okay.
Can you tell us what the property and the and the rezone request is?
They are requesting a rezone of um a lot on Thayer Court, nine eighty four Thayer Court, from a B one to a B two. And I believe they want to combine them. I haven't gotten the combination application yet, but I think they want to comb- combine them and put a storage unit facility on there that requires a conditional use permit as well. And I did not receive their conditional use permit for that one yet either, so.
How do you spell that?
I was bombarded. The street is it's Thayer, T H A Y E R.
Okay. Nine fifty one?
Nine four eighty four.
Nine eighty four. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our next rigor plant commission meeting is Tuesday, March twenty third, twenty twenty one, two P M. Next appointing plant commission secretary is Daniel Roberts. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Will be it, see you next time. Thank you.
Bye bye.